All in order, roll call please.
Chair Fredrickson?
Here.
Vice Chair Shores?
Here.
Commissioner De Vries?
Here.
Commissioner Goss is not here, Commissioner Hunsicker is not here. Commissioner Keith?
Here.
Commissioner McCoy?
Here.
We've got a quorum.
All right, room one stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. Scott, would you mind leading us tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, approval of minutes, regular meeting minutes of February 12th, 2019 for review and approval.
I'll second.
I got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All righty, and item B, special meeting minutes, special meeting minutes of February 20th, 2019, for review and approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Two, consideration of public comments. Those wishing to address the Planning and Zoning Commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time pursuant to ARS 38-431. Do I have any comments from the public? I see none, thank you, closed. Reports, pass council action. Richard, you want to?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, there was one item that was on the council's agenda at the last council meeting, and that was the rezoning from R110 to R166 for that property, the Paracha property off of Slough Canyon Road. The original request was for R166, it was changed to an R18 request, but it was turned down by the council. That's all I have.
Did they say why they did?
I just think it was a reaction to the neighbors in the area.
Right, thank you, Richard.
Thanks.
All right. Old business, four, conditional use permit, CUP 19-0001, AAA Mobile Home Park. A request from Ava Page, applicant in AAA MHP LLC, property owner, for a conditional use permit to allow park model homes considered to be recreational vehicles under the Kingman ordinance within the AAA Mobile Home Park. The conditional use permit is requested to allow a certain number of park spaces to be occupied by park model homes with the remainder of the spaces for manufactured homes. The subject property is located at 2023 East Morrow Avenue and is zoned RMH6. Residential manufactured home, 6,000 square foot lot minimum. The property is further described as Morrow Acres, Unit 2, Block 6-8, lying westerly of I-40 of Wade Drainage Channel, Section 6, T-21N, R-16W of the GNSRM. Sylvia?
Good evening. Wow, now you can hear me just fine. All right, yes, nice. All right, so yet we're bringing this back, back to you, and I just, I summarized the power point just a little to hit some of the points, but if you have any questions that you'd like me to expand on, please do let me know. Okay, so the property owner is present and the applicant is Ava Page. The applicant's representative is Chase Adams. The summary again of the request is a request for a conditional use permit to allow for six park spaces to be occupied by park models within AAA Mobile Home Park located at 2023 East Morrow Avenue. This item was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission at the last meeting, and the commission requested the applicant to submit a revised park plan that shows how spaces are currently assigned. A revised park plan, letter from park manager, list of current residents, and letter of those in support was submitted and included as a part of the staff report. Since the last meeting, the park manager met with residents to discuss future park plans, and five park models have been removed from the spaces. Some park models were placed off-site and some were temporarily placed in the parks vehicle storage area. And here is the park once again, and the spaces in the yellow are showing where the park models are proposed to be. We did get the revised park plan, this is the revised, well, actually it's more of showing how the actual spaces are rented out now. So when the original park plan was approved, there was 54 spaces, and then this current layout shows 47, and that is due to some of the spaces being rented, either one and a half space or two spaces. So the intent of the current park owner is to leave the approved plan, and then if over time the current residents do end up leaving, they would like to rent all the spaces as originally approved. So the ones in yellow are the larger spaces that changed, basically it changed as far as how they're being rented, and then the ones in green are where the park models are proposed. Here was just a picture showing the park models that were proposed to be in this park alongside manufactured homes that is already existing there. So some requirements of the manufactured home park. The owner of the AAA Mobile Home Park is seeking to allow models on six of the original 54 park spaces. The zoning ordinance allows a maximum of 40% of the park spaces to be RV spaces in a manufactured home park that is zoned RMH6, District by CUP. AAA Manufactured Home Park was approved in 1971 and meets the manufactured home park requirements of the zoning ordinance, and the property is zoned RMH6. The minimum size dimension required for park models are 30 by 65, which is 1,950 square feet. The park was approved with spaces that are 3,600 square feet and greater. The park model spaces will be required to have a paved or gravel non-tan parking space. So the question about the secondary fire exit was researched, and it was found that the original park plan wasn't required to have a secondary fire access. If this manufactured home park was submitted as a new park today, the city would likely require a secondary access that includes having a paved surface to the nearest paved road. But staff recommends that the secondary gate to the park not be used at this time as such. If anyone tries to drive out of it, they would be driving across vacant privately owned land and possibly into the Mojave Channel Wash. So there was comments that were submitted for the last meeting. I didn't receive additional comments to provide since that time besides what was given to me by the park manager. And these are the recommendations. So staff is recommending approval of the request for the conditional use permit to allow for six park spaces as shown in the exhibit to be occupied by park model homes with the remainder of the spaces for manufactured homes at AAA Manufactured Home Park located at 2023 East Morrow Avenue. The applicant must submit building permits and obtain prior approval to placing the park models on these spaces. Any addition or subtraction of spaces in AAA Manufactured Home Park will require a revised park plan to be submitted to the city for review and approval. The manufactured home spaces and park models shall meet the minimum space requirements in the zoning ordinance, and at this time they do. Any transition of manufactured home spaces to park model spaces will require the applicant to submit a conditional use permit application and revised park plan for review and processing. This conditional use permit is for six park models, as shown in the exhibit, and will remain valid as long as the use remains active. If any of the park model spaces are not used for a period of one year or more, the space will revert to manufactured home space. In the report, I had indicated six, but it's actually one year. And then if you have any questions for me, I'm ready for that. After that, the applicant's representative actually has a small presentation for you as well.
Any further questions, Sylvia?
Thank you, Sylvia.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Would you like to hear from the applicant now?
Yes. Let me have the applicant, would you like to?
It's okay, I'm just gonna show a couple pictures of you things, so I'm gonna plug myself into this really quickly. All right. My name is Chase Adams, I am the representative for the applicant, I am an attorney. Just to start out, I wanted to quickly say thank you for your consideration, thank you for having us back, and I wanted to go back over just a couple of things from the last. I think Sylvia has touched on a lot of the questions, the largest question I believe was regarding the fire exit, which, I am not good at using microphones. You would think as an attorney that has litigated for years that I'd have it, but no, still don't do well. The fire, the secondary fire exit, it's something that does not actually work here because it's not property owned by the park. So it's, for us, it's something that would be very difficult to do, and what we don't really want to go forward with at this time. Sylvia touched on this, but the plan for the park is not to make significant changes here, it's to fill spaces that are empty. In 2017, when Ms. Page became the regional manager, her goal was to help fill the park because there was approximately 15 empty spaces. In starting to fill the park, they determined that there were some spaces that because of when this park was originally zoned, that were a little bit small for a modern manufactured home. They brought in mobile homes for the spaces it can. They're still in the process of bringing in mobile homes with the intent being that they can increase the size of the park so that they have more revenue, so that there can improve the park as well as improve the surroundings, and truthfully adds to the revenue that can be taxed. With that, they have six spaces that we're requesting, as I think has been made clear. What I wanted to show was a couple of what the park homes that they're doing, what their goal is to do. So these are park homes in other parks in Utah and Arizona. And as you can see, they're fairly nice, they're not, when they're done initially, there's a lot of remodeling that's going to be done. So what was shown in the picture earlier is definitely not the finished product. The work will be taken so that when this home is done, it's ready for someone to live in and have a great place. So... As you can see, and I don't have a lot there, there are some nice homes that will be good for people to live in, to add affordable housing for people who currently can't have it. Other than that, Sylvia's already touched on the changes in the park with the spaces that are missing, and the map that was submitted to clarify what those spaces are. And... The only other thing I want to go back to is, is just simply to apologize to the committee for the, at the beginning back in December, prior to my involvement, but there was some confusion regarding the permits that were required for these homes, and I know there was some discussion about this last time. The park owners, the management, requested the permits the same day that they initially moved the homes in. They didn't know at the time that they needed a different permit nor conditional use permit, which was when I became involved to try to help with this. Their intent has never been to hide anything or deceive anything, but to do it the way that works best for the city, and anything other than that, they're not intending to do. Finally, after the last meeting, based upon the advice and the discussion with the committee, the management has spoken and made themselves available to as many of the residents as they can. I was involved on a few phone calls with residents to discuss some of the challenges and issues that have gone on, and although I won't say that all of those have been immediately resolved, the park is working towards resolving those as time passes, and this will help them so that they can manage the park better by increasing revenue again, so that they can work the park better. Is there any questions for me?
Any questions?
All right, thank you very much.
I'm gonna open this up to the public. If anybody would like to speak, please come forward on this matter and state your name. I see no one wants to speak. Step up. Step, please.
My name's Glendon Nicholson. I was just wondering, this is where the park models are going according to this map, which is the same place where some of them were previously?
Hold on a minute, we'll get it up on the screen for everybody to...
Okay. It's hard for me to tell. But so, Ava, are these three here, is this one still the one by Karen, and that one's still by Arden, that one's still by Lucy, are they still going back in there?
Sylvia, can you pull up the other map that has the green ones? Please.
Okay, my only question was that there's a large lot next to Mark and kind of behind us, that there's room for two there. Are we saving that for like a home or something, for mobile homes to go in? Because I thought that, my impression was that the park models and the manufactured home were going to be kept separate, not next to each other. And that's, to me, is not separate. If you have a manufactured home and a park model in a manufactured home, I thought they were going to be kept separate, so I just wanted that clear in my mind. So that was my only question.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Any further comments from the public? All right, I see none, I close it. All right, open it up for debate amongst us.
Oh, first of all, I want to comment.
Okay, let me, let me open it back up to the public, please.
Ma'am, could you bring your microphone?
I'm Arden Field, and I live in Lot... Yeah, I don't know, the green one, park models there. And I feel like the space they want to put in park models in are too small, because when we talked to them about it, they were gonna put Arizona rooms on the side, and there isn't enough room to make the regulations. Because they set one right on my back porch just about, so with a park model having an Arizona room, it's not going to give enough room in the spaces of four of them. Space 41 also, minus 47.
All right, thank you. Any further comments? Raise your hand. I see none, all right, closed. All right, open it back up.
Back to me?
Yes. May you resume, please, Lori.
Okay, first of all, I want to thank you for supplying us with the information that we requested. I'm sure you guys hustled to get that done, and I appreciate that. By the lack of attendance from other people in the park, I am assuming that things are moving in a positive direction at this time, and I'm glad to hear about that as well. However, I am still very concerned about adding six units into this area that there's not a secondary entrance. I, I don't, I'm sorry, that one still really bothers me, and I'm not sure there's anything we can do about that, but I really hate to think that I would be part of a decision that if something serious happened, that we didn't cover all of our bases, and I want to make sure that that is at least touched on and followed through.
I guess adding on to what Lori said, from seeing the people that did come to the last meeting, I'm not sure that a secondary exit would help them too much if there was a fire and actually getting out of their motorhome, so how do we assure that the spacing is like, big enough?
You still have to have the ability to get emergency vehicles in and out of there, and having only one entrance in is a concern, and they did touch on that, but...
But I guess seeing like how tight everything is in and of itself, and but, I mean, and with the fact that they might not even be able to get out of their place, like, that makes me a little nervous.
Sylvia?
I would like to clarify that a little bit for you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Turn your microphone on.
Okay, so they could actually put manufactured homes in today. The park models aren't going to increase the density of the park, so even if the park models aren't there, the same number of manufactured homes can be put in today as is. If it was a brand-new plan coming today, it would have a different requirement.
Okay, all right, thank you for answering, ma'am.
I have a comment. The park models, I'm showing seven spaces on this plan, aren't they applying for six?
Commissioner Shores, they are applying for six, that green one over to the right might be part of the table. It's off the park line.
Oh, okay.
It just designated what park models will be.
And I have a question. Do, this is just a question, and I don't think this has been addressed, but do these homes conform to the previous requirements to the current residents? Like when they were bringing a park model in, they had requirements that they had to meet, right? Do these meet those requirements? That's good to know. That's all I was just...
So I, my, I guess my reaction is, is that I didn't see anybody come up and comment. We did have two people that had basic general question, and we don't have the large turnout, so like Lori stated, I think you must have, you must have struck a home run or triple with most of your park residents in answering their concerns and questions. And I'm not getting any, any vibes that, anything differently, so I appreciate you stepping up and meeting with all your residents because I know they are, they are concerned, and they care for their living quarters, their park, and they love, they love the atmosphere from everything we read and the letters. And so I, I just want to thank you for, for doing that.
They had a mention of Arizona rooms being put on, is that the plan? On some of them, but not all of them, you're, you're having meeting setbacks and stuff like that for... Okay, all right, thank you.
So Sylvia, as, as my question last time, is the setbacks guidelines basically the same as in a residential neighborhood, five feet from the property lines and four feet from the rear, or do they have different requirements?
Same. Chairman, it's actually five feet rear, sides, and front.
Okay, so that will answer some of the questions these people are having too, as far as the setbacks and having room to put in.
Correct, and when the building permit comes in, we will be looking at those setbacks.
All right, fair enough.
And I have a question for just us in general. So if, like, all of the rules are being met, that, like, we have set out as a zoning committee, so if they're meeting all of the guidelines and rules that have been set out, regardless of if people are particularly pleased with having a park model next to their manufactured home, does that particularly make a big difference? Right, because aren't we just, are we supposed to just vote on whether or not it? That's what I'm confused about, because I'm not particularly convinced everybody's happy about it, but if they meet the requirement?
Yes, as long as the requirements are met for the city and everything in our zoning ordinance and the, and the general 2030, everything's met there, that's...
Then it's pretty much a, okay.
Yes.
If it's done, you know, correctly and meets all codes and stuff like that. You know, in our last planning and zoning meeting, you know, I heard from most of the residents in that community of this park that they weren't opposed or against it. They were just a little bit put off on the approach of how it was handled. But I did hear, you know, from the majority of them that they didn't have a problem with park models, and I don't either. I mean, park models, you know, they really don't fall into a classification as an RV because they're not self-contained, they're generally 10 feet wide, so they're, they have to be considered a wide load being on, you know, public roadways. So I really don't see a problem, you know, with the park models in there. I just kind of was a little bit stepped back by the approach that was taken. You know, because they are, you know, mostly seniors, it is a 55-plus park, you know, and that's what bothered me. And I did read a letter that your residents did, you know, provide us, and they were concerned, in this letter, that you are on a website. And on this website, it does state that for, it has overnight, weekly, and monthly rentals, and I did read that in their letter, so your residents are still concerned about property values and the traffic coming in and out of the park. I went to that website, and the one down in Mesa has overnight camping and stuff like that. I did not see in the website that addressed Kingman that that is, you know, it's not part of the overall plan. So, you know, I just wanted to clarify that, you know, that I did research, and I did see that you are just putting in park models and putting them in as a residence, and you're not doing, wanting to do, you know, camping overnight spaces with RVs. I get that, yeah. So I just wanted to, you know...
Can you come to the podium, please, and then state your name? Thank you.
My name's Ava Page. The only reason why we started the website two years ago with AAA when all the tenants were notified of the website and that we had it was to try and advertise the park, to try and fill the spaces before we brought any homes in. That's whenever I started marketing on social media, Twitter, everything. I was trying to find any avenue I could to fill the park. And that was 24 months ago.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you. But I think that the residents should be advised, maybe a letter from the attorney, stating what your position is, that you're not intending to have daily, weekly, monthly rentals, so it doesn't have that traffic coming in and out. And I think that would put the residents a little more at ease with what, you know, you are trying to accomplish.
I have a question. Under our recommendation, number seven, face that if these spaces aren't used for a period of six months or more, that they would revert back to the manufactured home zone? Do you have an issue with that?
No, if I can get a mobile home in there, I'd rather have a mobile home in there. I want a permanent house in there that never leaves. If I could get a ground house in there, that's, that's what I want to do, over anything I can do.
So if you don't have park model or a mobile on it, then after six months, it goes?
That's fine.
Mobile only?
It'll go back to mobile only, I'm totally okay with that.
Actually, I think on one of the recommendations, it was going to a year, is what staff's recommended. Yes, Sylvia clarified that, and staff recommendation was a year.
Are you still planning on putting the older ones in there?
It just depends on what we can find. Like I said, we moved three of them out, and all six of them are off the lots now. There's not any of them on the lots, we've moved them all off, and three of them are gone.
So all code violations have been...
All code violations are resolved. We did that a week ago. We maintained everything. It just took me time to get a mover and everybody over there to do it.
All righty.
So...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And any further discussion? It's, it's been closed, ma'am. It's, it's been closed, ma'am. Any need to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
With conditions?
Yeah.
One through seven?
Not all of them. The one with the, the site plan where they were, because in the past planning and zoning meeting, spaces have changed. The park is not actually original to the original site plan. You know, that there has been encroachment on different spaces. And if I remember right, it was 43 encroached on half of 44, and 44 half of 45, if I remember right. That, so we don't have a 44 space anymore, we only have a 43 and a 45. Is, am I correct?
Commissioner, I need to clarify that again, so the spaces here are technically leased, but the underlying approved park spaces are there. These residents in time move away, they want to use the original spaces. This happened with the previous park manager that didn't understand how the leases were supposed to take place.
Oh, okay.
So that addresses?
The encroachment.
Yep, that's everything, because I, I read that same thing, and I was going to say.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a motion?
You're taking out number three of the new site?
Alright, I'll take that out.
Well, it, any, any, any new thing will ha- will get a revised park plan to be submitted for review and approval.
No, I do want.
I think it needs to stay in there.
It needs to stay in there.
Oh.
For, yeah, an approval, yes, if anything changes, then a new site would have to be.
So then you're recommending one through seven?
Yes, yes, I will recommend that.
So I have a motion.
Okay.
I have a motion in a second for recommendation one through seven, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Approve it.
Approve.
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 Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
Alright, item B, zoning ordinance update, update on consultant section selection for zoning ordinance update.
Alright, so we did interview those consultants, as we mentioned a month ago, and we did select one of the consultants, which is Lisa Weiss Consulting. We are working.
What's it?
Lisa Weiss Consulting. And we are working on the contract, and so the intent is to have them start by the new budget cycle, which is July 1st.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Very good.
Alright, item C, planning and zoning commissioner recruitment, update related to planning and zoning commissioner recruitment.
Okay, and so as far as the recruitment, we are holding it out just until next month to close out the applications. We do now have three applications, but we still are encouraging those to apply and to please forward, that we have this opening, because it is posted on the city Facebook page and our website, so we still encourage, encourage to get more applicants, please.
So you're extending it?
We did extend it, yes.
Alright, thank you, Sylvia.
You're welcome.
Alright, item five, new business, conditional use permit case CUP 19-0002, mini storages. A request from Jed Noble, applicant, and Edward Dunham, property owners, for an extension of time and modification of a conditional use permit for a mini storage facility. The request is for a one-year extension of time on the original conditional use permit and a modification of the permit to allow a caretaker's residence on site. The subject site is owned C3 Commercial Service Businesses and is located at 3645 East Andy Devine Avenue. Their property is 3.5 acres and is described as parcels 1B, 1C, and 1D, Block 2, Shanger Law Estates, Second amended section 5, T dash point 2, 21N, R16W of the G and SRM, Mojave County, Arizona. And if that isn't a wordful, mouthful.
Good evening, and Chairman, members of the commission. This is a conditional use permit case CUP 19-002. Property owner is Edward Dunham, the applicant is Jed Noble with Civil Works Engineering, and he requests us for an extension of time on a CUP, conditional use permit for a mini storage facility at 3645 East Andy Devine Avenue. There's also a request to modify the original CUP to allow a caretaker's residence on the property. The property itself is about three and a half acres in size, Zone C3. The general plan designation is community commercial, it's not with, located within a flood zone. There are water and sewer lines nearby that will have to be extended to serve the site. And the property is, is accessed off of East Andy Devine, which is also Highway 66, which is a divided state highway with a median. There's a concrete pathway along the road edge, there's no driveway to the site at this time. This is the surrounding zoning map, everything immediately surrounding the property is Zone C3. Aerial view of the site, there is some, few residences behind it, Mobile Home Park. To the south is a fueling facility which, which is closed. Dollar General to the northeast, and across Andy Devine is the state, ADOT Yard, MVD, and also the City of Kingman Public Works facility. The site was posted in, on February 25th, we sent a public notice to the surrounding property owners, also published a notice in the minor. We did receive one inquiry from a property owner behind the site, they weren't opposed to it, they just had a lot of questions about drainage and, and some other issues with the property. City engineering had no objections to the request, they did mention that they'll have comments at the time of, of billing permit submittal, water and sewer extensions will be required across the property frontage, and a grading and drainage plan will be required. No other comments or objections, ADOT did initially comment on the need for possibly a right turn lane, acceleration lane, basically any access to the site will be, have to be approved by ADOT. So as you, many of you were here a year ago, as you recall, there was a, this was before you, back in February of last year, in March, you went to the council and was approved, forming storage complex on the site. Within the zoning ordinance, there is a requirement that, for a CUP that requires a billing permit to be implemented, that it be done within one year, that the billing permit be issued, and substantial construction needs to have occurred. In this case, that didn't happen, however, the applicant has stated that civil plans are about 95% complete at this point, and they expect to be submitting the billing permit soon, but are seeking extensions so the CUP does not expire. Also, there are some plans to the original concept of the development, originally it was going to be, they were going to use Conex boxes and then repurpose them and use, used as mini storage units, and also use the Conex boxes for construction of, of an office. They are going to go to standard construction, however, in this, in this case, with metal buildings for the storage units and regular construction for the office building. Also, as I mentioned earlier, there's a request for a caretaker's residence, the owner will be living on site, and so that is part of the CUP modification request. So this is the grading plan for the sites, a little hard to read, but it's going to consist of about six buildings. There'll be entrance off of, off of, off of the street with a fenced area and a, and a gate. This shows you the office location and caretaker's residence, which will be easily connected to each other with a conceptual elevation of the, what the building will, will look like. So we went through our required findings for the CUP again, as we did last time. Again, it does meet all the political regulations, bulk regulations, doesn't appear to, will have a negative impact on the surrounding properties. Traffic pattern, again, because it is on, accessing off a state highway, ADOT will be responsible for approval of all access to the site and driveways. Landscaping and fencing, they will have to provide at least 10% of the net site area for landscaping at the time of development. Also, there is an area of outside storage on the site proposed for RVs and boats at the northern end of the property, and that will, area will have to be screened with, with fencing, at least eight feet in height. We are recommending either masonry wall or a chain link fence with double slats. And again, doesn't appear this property will pose a nuisance to the surrounding properties. So staff recommendation is for approval of the one-year extension of time for the CUP, and also a approval for a modification of the original CUP to allow the caretaker's residence with following conditions. One, the driveway access and roadway improvements will be subject to ADOT's review and permitting processes, and that the open storage areas will be screened from neighboring streets and properties in accordance with our zoning ordinance, and the allowable fencing materials will be either masonry or chain link with double slats. And with that, I'll try to answer any questions you have, the applicants are also here this evening.
The only question I have is, being that it's subject to ADOT's approval, does any of the, I guess you would say, the forward-facing fence, does ADOT have any requirements, all that, they leave that all up to the cities?
The, the fencing is up to the city, basically, I believe.
Commercial property, they're allowed zero lot line construction?
They are.
That would include on the front property?
It would, mhm.
I have a question, Rich, on the caretaker residence, that's construction, right? That doesn't mean that for a year, somebody's going to have a trailer on there with that conditional?
No, they're planning on building a, an actual building on.
That, that doesn't give them permission, though, to be staying there, okay. Just wondering, because there's a situation over there on airway. Because there's a situation with, on airway in the corner, some of these commercial buildings got their clothes hanging out there with a little trailer and stuff, so. It looks really tacky, so I just want to make sure that, that didn't give permission to have, pull their trailer on while they're building, you know what I mean?
In commercial projects, there is a permit, there is a permission, permission or allowance for a construction trailer on site while they're constructing the site, but not just, not to live in it.
Right. Any further questions, Richard? I see none, thank you, Richard.
Thanks.
Would the applicant like to step forward, or?
Hi, hello, my name's Jed Noble, I'm the applicant. Which pretty much covered everything. The plans, I'd say, are 98% complete, I submitted them to the contractor last week for his review to, I guess, basically see if there's any changes that he wants to make, cost savings, those kinds of things. We should be able to submit, I would guess, in, in the next month, so. Basically, here to answer any questions you may have.
Are you still planning on using the Conex type?
No, we changed from Conex to traditional metal buildings.
Okay, so are they going to be sealed at the roof line, are they going to have airflow through them?
I, I'm not a.
Yes, here it is.
Okay. I'm a civil engineer, I'm not a contractor, yeah.
Do you know what the building height is on the front property line, Jason? That's the maximum height of the building?
I believe they're 10 feet.
That would include the residence?
The residence is a, it's a two-story structure.
But it's setback further.
There's, there's actually a drainage ditch between the buildings and the highway right of way. I, I believe the offset from the property line is approximately 10 feet.
Any further questions?
So you said you're going to be submitting plans?
I plan so, yeah.
And are you starting the residence first?
Speak up, please.
Are you starting the residence first, or the storage buildings first?
I'm, I, I'm the engineer, I'm not, I'm not responsible for the construction, I, I don't know what kind of phasing they're going to plan. So.
Who's the person responsible here?
For construction?
Mhm. With the, anybody that could answer their questions, are they here with you?
Lanny, do you want to come up here? This is Lanny, he's the contractor.
Please state your name, sir.
My name is Lanny Demetz with Luxor Construction and Design, residing in Kingman.
So is this going to be phase work, are you starting with the residence, or are you starting with the, the storage containers?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Are you starting, when you start construction, are you starting with the residence first, or are you starting with the storage buildings first?
The current process steps would be to start the site work, utilities, complete that simultaneously, then we'll do the office building would be first, as far as a structure, and then, and that would start about the same time as the actual storage units, and then following up would be the residence, the caretaker's residence. But when it would be done, it would all be completed at the same time. But it's like it's phased, the first one would be the grading, utilities, infrastructure, ADOT entrance, then it would move to the units in the office building, and then it would move to the caretaker by the time we finish and then paving it out.
My understanding is that they still need ADOT approval?
Excuse me?
I, am I understanding you are still waiting on ADOT approval?
Yeah, we'll be submitting to the city and to the ADOT as well.
We've had meetings with ADOT to prove everything, and they've basically approved everything, we just need to complete the plans, and we're probably a week, two weeks away from having that completed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to open this up to the public, any, any comments from the public? I see none, closed, alright, enough for discussion.
I guess, one question I have is, is it normal for people to live at storage facilities?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
On-site, yes.
Not owner. Okay, just wondering.
Yeah, you see it all. Into the next, see where they have like a office down below and a road there.
Oh?
You do.
I need a motion?
Right, let's do this.
I move to approve the extension of time and the addition of a. Resident.
Resident. And I'll sec- I'll second it.
I have a motion, I have a second, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Approve.
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 Thank you, Sandy. Item B, 2019 Land Use Law Update. Opportunity for a planning and zoning commissioner to attend the 2019 Land Use Law Update Seminar on June 14th, 2019, in Phoenix, Arizona.
Okay, so we put this out to you to invite one of you to come to this Land Use Law Update. I provided you with what classes will be available. Basically, there is Airbnb, water, a topic about water, ethics for planners and lawyers, well. Anyway, special places legislative and case law update, but if one of you could attend, Rich goes.
Sylvia. All right, you can resume, Sylvia.
Would you like me to start over, or? More or less. Yeah, more or less, we need one of you, or if one of you would like to go. We'd like to know who would like to go in June. The registration hasn't started yet for this, but as soon as we, yeah. I found the date and everything, but there was no link to register at the, when I looked, looked it up. But if one of you, would you, if one of you would like to attend with Rich, just kind of need to know that part so far.
You want to answer now, or?
If we can't answer tonight, what?
There you go.
I'm sure next month should be okay. Yeah, and if the deadline is, yeah, if the deadline is getting, reaching quicker, I can email and try to get a response quicker.
I'd like to go. Oh, there you go. There you go. It's her turn, anyways.
Okay.
I don't have any objections.
No. All right, so Terry Sharps. Okay, sounds good. Thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you, Sylvia.
Thank you, Sylvia.
Thank you, Sylvia.
Announcement by commission members. Limited to announcements, availability, or attendance at conferences and seminars, requests for agenda items for future meetings, and requests and reports from staff. No discussion on any of these items. Do you have any? I have, I have one, just a friendly reminder, and I did this myself between the last meeting and now. I think it might be a good, a good idea and refresher for everybody if they got time to look over our general plan twenty-thirty. Look over that booklet, and there's a lot of things that would help answer a lot of our questions that I know do come up amongst us. So that's just my suggestion. Make a motion for an adjournment?
Oh, I have one question. I don't know if it's at all possible to change times of anything, but five-thirty is a really difficult time to get here. So I don't know how.
Okay, I don't know, I don't know how things are decided, but just if that was something that was optional.
This was, this was all changed due to the city council's request to bring everybody in on the same times, so there was no confusion amongst the general public. So that's why we rolled it back from six to five-thirty.
Okay.
So.
As a mom? Sorry, kids.
I have a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and second. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?